I had a request as to whether or not the council wants to consider having the city attorney human resources and finances deliver their presentations first so they can leave and then we can finish up city council and city manager.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so.
What about city clerk?
City clerk, too.
Oh, yeah.
So, city clerk, city treasurer, we'll do everybody and then city manager and council will be last.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
So, city clerk, you're on.
Will you be clicking for me with the clicker?
All right, so we have the city clerk.
All right, so I'll just, okay. I am Annette Hippona. I have served as the city clerk of Daily City since being elected in November 2008.
Is the microphone?
No.
Use the hand one.
Use the hand one. All right. As stated, I am Annette Hippona and I have served as a city clerk in the city of Daily City since being elected in November 2008. In this position, I bring the experience of being an electorate school board member and the work ethic of helping to run a family auto business for 14 years. I believe it's my private sector work experience along with my immigrant parents that gave me the drive to promote our passport service which has brought an additional $900,000 in revenue into the Daily City General Fund during my tenure. The city clerk's office also functions as the receptionist for the main Daily City number. Is this still working? I will continue.
Why don't you just do it up here at one of these seats?
Sure, I can do that. That's okay, I'll go ahead and sit down. Many departments send community members to our office for information about getting birth and death certificates, marriage licenses, divorce decrees, and court records. Certain times of the year, we are asked about IRS forms and voter registration. The preservation of official documents is one of the primary legal requirements for the office of the city clerk. Due to budget constraints, the city clerk's office has lost an important position. That position's primary purpose was to upgrade our filing system by scanning current and old city documents into electronic format. Since then, my office has only been able to scan current official documents including council resolutions and ordinances, contracts and claims. You may recall that we had a flood in my office last year. I am happy to report that only one box of documents was damaged. The emergency event, or that emergency event, made me realize that every document needs to be scanned as soon as possible to guarantee their preservation as required by law. My goal for the city clerk's office for the next several years is to review every unscanned document in storage and determine those which must be preserved and scanned. In order to complete this extensive project with our current staff and within our current budget, we will require some changes on how we do business in the office of the city clerk. In addition to the preservation of city documents, the city clerk's office prepares the council agenda in minutes. It has been my goal for several years to go to action minutes so that we can free up staff time on the very important job of scanning and preserving official documents. Video files of our city council meetings are available to the public and provide a complete record of every word at city council meetings. A written record of the actions taken by the city councils, all that is required in the minutes, and we will go to action minutes starting at our very next council meeting. I'm not on it yet, not yet. Any announcements of upcoming events are much more timely communicated to the public by our extensive social media presence on Nextdoor, Facebook, Nixle, and Twitter, in addition to our Daily City website, cable TV, Daily Wire, and flyers at libraries and city hall. I would like to thank my assistant city clerk who didn't make it tonight, Ms. Intendencia, registration clerk Mrs. Eisen, and office assistant Mrs. Koo for their hard work and their very positive attitude in serving the public in the office of the city clerk and our passport acceptance office. Now, I'd like to present you with our city budget and the overview. Very good. So, as you can see, this is our mission statement. I do realize that all of you have a copy of this, so I'll just give you the bullet points. We are an election official administrator of certain records. The next is we're a legislative administrator, and as public records manager, we oversee the preservation and protection of the public record. This is my organizational chart. We have three people who are full-time equivalents and one who is only part-time. These are our core services. They have not changed in the last six years or so that I've done this, or maybe eight years. They all remain the same. It's having complete records of city council procedures and preserving records and, of course, all the important, very important things down at the bottom, which is the Freedom of Information Act, the California Public Records Act, the Brown Act, the Federal Voting Rights Act, and the Open Meetings Act. And here is our support for citywide services, which we really find, of course, very important. We provide information to the public about civic meetings and activities. We provide poll location and collection point for absentee ballots. We accept, record, and process claims and conduct bid openings for the city's capital and public improvement projects. Our accomplishments for years 2017 and 18 are as follows. By the end of 2018, the city clerk's office will have generated revenue surpassing $1 million in passport fees since becoming a passport office here in 2005. We've digitalized campaign disclosure forms and filings and posted them on the city clerk's webpage for easy and instant public access. By doing that, it saves an awful lot of time and people get the information as soon as we get it, pretty much 24 hours. We also follow the retention guidelines to purge records already on Sire electronic record system. Our goals and objectives are as follows: to continue promoting transparency by designing information and documents to be easily accessible on the city's website; to improve efficiency by continuing to scan and create searchable digital archive documents of official records contained in the city clerk's vault and storage unit across the street; and finally, to improve accessibility by continuing migration of the records legislative history to the Sire electronic document management system. And finally, the budget summary by category. And you can all read this yourself.
For the proposed budget, the fiscal year 19 and 20, the budget FD is three. Major revenue are from the passport processing is around $126,000 for each fiscal year. When you look at the city clerk, the total expenditure, salary and benefit, almost like 80% of the operating expenses around budget at $420,000 in the first year and $445,000 in the next year. Service and supply in fiscal year 2019, there's a $150,000 budget for the election expense. So that's why you see like a change from $7,800 in 2018 to around $156,000 in 2019. So those are the major expenditure for the city clerk office for the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Any questions?
You said there's an increase in 2019?
It's the service and supply is where we budget the election expense for the November 2018 election. Roughly, it's around $150,000.
So you budget it, you said for 2018, so you budget it in 2019?
For 2019.
2019.
2019.
It's the 2018, 2019 years.
Right.
Election's in November, so that's in that year.
And that alternating higher expenses every two years based on when the elections are.
No, no, I'm saying it's, but it's in the fiscal year 2019, but the election is in November of 2018.
Right.
I'm just saying how, I'm just looking at.
Right.
Well, the fiscal year.
The fiscal year is 2018-19.
Got it. Starts in July, I get it.
So, yeah, starts July 1, 2018 till June 30, 2019. So we call it the '29 fiscal year, but it starts in 2018.
Taking that same approach, I'm looking at fiscal year 2017, and I see that there's a difference of approximately $60,000. I would assume 2017 took in the 2016 election, so why the difference of $60,000?
I believe that maybe because we had a retired person come in and, in the meantime, no salary for about four or five months. Retired, left, and someone new came in, rather.
So would that come under salaries and benefits? I'm on the service and supply line. Service and supplies, 2017.
Aren't we planning for a TOT in this 2018-19 election? Aren't we planning to put some things on the ballot ourselves and that costs extra money?
Well, $60,000.
And we didn't put on anything in 2016, 2017.
Yes, we did. I think it was the, was it the initiatives for fire, Measure V, I think it was?
So it may have been Measure B.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's a question that I have because.
Well, they were election costs, they were ballot costs.
So, but 2017, which is for the fiscal year 2016, I see $92,000, and we're looking at 2019, which is going to take in the fiscal year of 2018 of $156,000. So that's approximately $60,000 difference.
I can give you a breakdown of all the expenses for that year.
Okay, all right. Well, that's the one I'm questioning, why the difference, and, you know, we can go forward, and if we can just look into that, I would appreciate it. My other question is on FTEs. I see you have a funded staffing of three. So does this proposal change any staffing at all? According to the earlier report, I don't think there was any changes in the city clerk's office.
No, only full-time equivalent is under three, and then the other salary is in salary and benefits because she's not full-time equivalent. The position is not a full-time.
It's hourly.
It's hourly.
I see. So that, what I'm asking is, will any of that change?
No, it's not going to change.
Okay. And lastly, grants and, because you spoke of you wanting to scan and archive reports, I guess electronically.
Yes.
Has there been thoughts of looking for the acquisition of equipment or storage of records, if any grants are out there, either through federal or state?
I have not looked at grants for doing it. Typically, we've done it in-house, and we had a designated employee that did it. And it's only now in the last year or so since we had the flood that I realized we had better do something, and I also happened upon going to the, to our storage unit early this year, and the bathroom flooded and was actually going toward all our records. And so I'm really trying to take care of this so that we have everything we need.
And you have the equipment to do it?
And we, yes, we have, the equipment is in-house, yes. We just need to make the time to do it.
I see.
And do historical. There are people who have told me that it's contracted out by several organizations, and then I've heard pros and cons about whether that's a good idea or not, because we have it done the way we like it, and then maybe training another company to do it might not be quite the same.
Okay, well, I think it's a marvel idea as we move forward to the future for electronic archival and storage and obtaining the equipment. It's just putting out the idea that maybe grants may be out there for city, local governments to do so, because we had this big discussion before, but it's a marvel idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the council information, going back to 2017 budget, the information we get from the county is the election cost in 2017 is around $100,000 roughly, and the actual expenditure for fiscal year 2017 after all the elections over is around $87,000. So pretty much it's right on target. So for the proposed fiscal year for 2019, the projection coming from the county is around $150,000. My estimate that number will be around $130,000 to $140,000. It all depends on the actual incomes we received after the election is over. So it means it's a little bit higher, maybe around $10,000 or $15,000 higher than it should be, but we never know the actual cost until we finish all the election. So do I answer your question?
Thank you, thank you so much. Yeah, pretty close, but then it begs another question from me. If it was $100,000 and we spent $87,000 on the bill, that's a difference of $13,000. If we take your $156,000 and subtract $130,000, that's a difference of $26,000. But that, but that will come, that will come, so I think.
I think the $150,000 election cost is based on the most accurate projection coming from the county. There's no way that we can have a more realistic projection than coming from the county.
Okay.
I might add that the city clerk is very prudent in the management of the financial resources given to her, and so if there is a way to lower the cost for the election, she's always looked at the best way to do that, and any funds that are not expended for election purposes are funds that are then returned to the city. She has not used funds for anything other than the stated purposes.
I'm sorry, and rebuttal to that, I'm not really questioning as to the prudency as how the money is spent. What I am questioning is the numbers that are given to us as a proposed, because this is only one part of the entire budget, and I'm questioning as to how the numbers were obtained. I'm not questioning as to how the money is spent, whether it's in a prudent fashion. I have no doubts.
I totally understand, and I was merely pointing out that when the county has been off, because we rely on the county for an estimate of the cost, when it's off, either up or down, we, again, the city clerk's office.
Gotcha.
Handles those funds as prudently as possible in fulfillment of the election requirements.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Hippona, you had mentioned Rebecca Eisen as being part of your staff, and I know she's worked there for a while.
She has.
Is she a full-time permanent employee?
No, she's not. No.
Okay, is there, is there a plan to make her such? I'm just wondering why she's stuck in that sort of position.
You know, that, that may be a little bit out of my purview, because I think we just look at positions, and so over the years even we've, from when I first got there, eliminated one position, so I can't really comment to why she's not really, or that position isn't permanent, except probably more to, based on the budget, because.
Isn't the city clerk's office kind of a unique situation in the fact that you're elected, so the staff in that office is not, you're not their direct supervisor?
No, that I'm not.
Yeah.
Okay, then, so who can answer my question?
So, the answer to your question is that Rebecca has been a long-term hourly employee. She, in order to become a permanent employee, we would have to allocate an additional full-time equivalent position. Then we would have to advertise it, and she would have to compete for it. We could not just make her a full-time employee. She would have to compete for the position. And once we open it up, then anyone else who wants to apply for the job may also apply, and she may not be selected for the job. So we have kept it as an hourly position. She definitely has a skill set that is useful to us, and for budgetary reasons, because the city clerk and I have had this conversation over time, for budgetary reasons, we just haven't been able to afford another full-time position.
I see. Okay. And then who would be making that decision as to the hire of that position? Would not, wouldn't be the city clerk?
Who hires them?
Hiring a position, if there was a, if there was a full-time recruitment undertaken to, you know, to fill that position on a full-time basis, if it was made a permanent full-time position, then the city, we would run a process, and the city clerk would then be able to interview all the successful candidates and then make a selection.
So it's the city clerk's selection, even though you don't get to hire someone to say?
Well, the city clerk has.
Selections.
Right. It would be her input, because it basically is the staffing in her office, but technically, the city clerk only has one position that works directly for her, and that is the deputy. But, so that would be a position that she would fill, and also, and she did, she actually made the selection of the individual in that position, but any additional staffing that is provided for the city clerk's office is not within the purview of an elected official to have that staff and determine how many staff they're going to have.
So who hires?
You.
Yes, so the city manager is ultimately the hiring authority for that position. But since the person works in her office, it's her input that this is the person that will work out best, and then it's authorized, if we had a full-time position.
And actually, I'm extremely grateful to the city manager, because we were looking at cutting the hours on that position, and we didn't need to. And it just happened to be that day that I went in, there was me in the office and someone else, just one other person, because people are out sick or on vacation or have children sick, and so then we wouldn't even have an office practically open, and it's very difficult with our short, with the fewer employees that we now have here to fill or ask someone to even come in. We don't even think about doing it, because we know they're really lower, less staffed.
Yeah, well, as you mentioned, that it seems like there's a lot of kind of scanning of documents necessary, and so I don't see.
I'd be happy to take any of you on a tour to see it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that clarification that you provided for us around the staff retention is going to be the same moving forward.
So next up is the city treasurer, Danica Halverson.
My name is Danica Halverson. I've served as deputy city treasurer from December 2003 up into my appointment as city treasurer in 2014. The office of the city treasurer is responsible for the management of cash and investment for the city and the San Mateo North County District. I'm responsible for investments made in compliance with state law and the city's investment The mission statement for my office is to invest funds in a manner that maximizes investment income and maintains adequate cash availability while ensuring that principal invested is protected from loss. Investments include various short-term government-issued certificates of deposit, federal government obligations, deposits in the State of California Local Agency Investment Fund and the County of San Mateo Investment Pool. The core services the city treasurer's office provides is management of the pooled cash and investment of the city in North San Mateo County Sanitation District. The city treasurer's continued support for citywide priorities include ensuring liquidity to meet the daily, weekly, monthly, and annual cash needs of the city. We spend approximately around $8 to $9 million a month in payments that go out. Continued goals and objectives for the city treasurer's office is to ensure safety, liquidity, and yield. We need to make sure that there's no risk in city investments at any time, that money is available when needed, and that we're yielding the maximum interest possible without sacrificing safety and liquidity. Next is the proposed budget for fiscal year 19 and 20. There isn't a significant increase. The salaries and benefits reflect projected increases over the years, and services and supplies and other charges are basically maintained the same to ensure memberships into various associations that I'm a part of and being able to attend conferences and seminars. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a few. Ms. Halverson, I see funded staffing is .18.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know, is that usual? So what I gather is you spend, I guess, a fifth of your time doing city treasurer-related stuff?
So when I was appointed to city treasurer, the position went from a full-time city treasurer and a deputy city treasurer to a stipend for city treasurer, so that stipend equates to about 18% of my salary.
All right, I'm a little confused. Okay, so it's a stipend that the city treasurer receives, I mean, as an elected official?
That is correct. I believe you may not have been here in the previous discussion when I explained to the council about the relationship between the city clerk and the city treasurer's positions. City treasurer, the former incumbent, served as city treasurer for 40-plus years in what was viewed as a full-time position. However, as an elected, we don't have full-time elected officials, because elected officials may work whatever number of hours necessary to fulfill their elected responsibilities, but they are not eight-hour-a-day, full-time employees of the city. The city treasurer, when he, the former incumbent, retired, the council decided to appoint his deputy, which was Ms. Halverson, to fill the unexpired term that remained until she then ran for election two years later. Is that correct? Yeah, two years later. Recognizing that the responsibilities of the city treasurer were not 100, excuse me, I think this may be pizza.
Hello? Yes, someone's going out right now. Someone's going out right now.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Where was I? Oh, so the council recognized, as did the city treasurer, that the role of the city treasurer had evolved over time, and much of the responsibilities that historically over a 40-year period of time were manual activities that involved a lot of daily activity, today, using technology and other means, it doesn't require as much time and hands-on kinds of activity. And so the city treasurer was asked, the deputy was asked if she wanted to be considered to be appointed to the treasurer's position, but being that she was a full-time city employee as well as the deputy city treasurer, and she received compensation for serving as deputy at the time because she was a full-time employee, that was added to her compensation, because she was also promoted around that same time to become the payroll manager for the city. So she is a full-time employee of the city as the payroll manager. She receives a. She receives a stipend as the elected official, not unlike the stipend that council gets for your services. She gets a stipend for the treasurer function that she conducts as part of her employment with the city, as an elected, as an elected. So she only engages in deputy or city treasurer functions for the equivalent of, you said, 18% of the time. And the balance of that time, she is serving as a full-time city employee as payroll manager. And I can assure you that she has never missed any of those responsibilities as payroll manager because we all get our checks on time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I'm just wondering if sometime in the future, if you would have a separate payroll manager and a treasurer, would that change from a stipend to an actual salary as an elected official?
Well, it was determined that we reviewed with the council the functions of the city treasurer at the time that the former incumbent retired. And as I mentioned, because things have changed over time and technology allows many of the duties, transferring funds, a whole lot of things don't require as much hands-on day-to-day activity as it had historically, it was determined that that job wasn't really the equivalent of a full-time job anymore and that it could be, and that if someone other than the payroll manager had run for election for the job, that it would not be a full-time, eight-hour-a-day job coming in five days a week, the same way that the city clerk's job, similar kind of, and actually more activity on the city clerk's part because she has a lot of other functions. The city clerk sets her own schedule. She, when she needs to be here for things, she's here. If she doesn't need to be here, she's not required to be here like a city employee would be. The payroll manager is required to be here every day, eight hours a day, because she's a full-time employee. But as the treasurer, she can incorporate those responsibilities along with her day-to-day duties as payroll manager. In the future, that could change. She might decide not to run for reelection as treasurer at some point in the future, and if that job was opened up for, you know, anyone to run for the position, the council could agree to provide the same kind of stipend, recognizing that it's not a full-time requirement to be in that office eight hours a day.
Okay. I just want to ensure some sort of fairness amongst both elected officials, the city clerk and the city treasurer. And if I'm not mistaken, the salaries are completely different. One is a higher amount, whereas another one is just a stipend. Now, if I reverse engineer these numbers, salaries and benefit of $30,000 on .18%, basically translates to close to $150,000 a year. So I guess I'm not going to debate on it this time, but it's going to come in the future that there may be a differentiation between the two based upon how elected officials are going to be compensated here in Daly City. That's all I wanted to bring up.
It could very well, and, but as I pointed out earlier, I think that you would have to look at the differing level and time commitment for the respective responsibilities of the treasurer and the clerk. The treasurer is not required to be at every council meeting. The city clerk is. So there are those differentiations of duties that, you know, call for a higher level of compensation of the clerk because there are more hours spent doing the job than are required of the city treasurer to do only that treasury function. Now, as payroll manager, she works full-time, and she is fully compensated for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one question. So in the past, prior to the change in the city treasurer kind of time frame or their allocation of time, what was it? You mentioned with the city clerk, she had her own schedule. What was the city treasurer's time like?
So the city treasurer had his own schedule. He came in a few days a week, a few hours a day, definitely not eight hours a day, and not, definitely not every single day of the week. And so he did what he needed to do, but he also had a deputy who did a lot of the ongoing activities of the treasury function. And when the treasurer would direct the deputy to take certain steps regarding investments and things like that, it was generally the deputy who executed the real activity that the treasurer directed. But he did not in any way, shape, or form serve eight hours a day, five days a week in that position.
Thank you.
And I think as a final note, the council determined at that time that times had changed, that things, circumstances had changed over 40 years, and that it was time to restructure the position in such a way that was more reflective of what was actually going on and the requirements of that job.
Yeah. It's, times has changed. I can see that over 40 years. Thank you very much.
I imagine in the beginning, you had one of those machines that you punch in the numbers and it goes run.
Exactly. I don't know if the council wants to take a five or 10-minute break.
The food is here, so.
Okay, we now have the city attorney.
So we need like two and a half minutes to get it.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
So there's salad in the white trash with the lunch. The salads are ready. Bring the banner.
I believe so.
I just want two ideas.
Go ahead, give them.
Go please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go.
Okay. Yeah, so now we have the city attorney's office.
Thank you.
We're going to have the city attorney's office. Thank you.
Wait.
No, no, it's okay. I think we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be very multitaskers here.
Okay, thank you, honorable mayor and members of the city council. This is the budget presentation for the city attorney's office for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. As you'll see, the general mission statement for the city attorney's office as a general support department for all departments in the city council is that we endeavor to provide support to the city elected officials, all the commissions, all the agencies, and all of the staff as well. To the extent possible, we do have a small city attorney's office of two full-time attorneys. We work in-house. But in areas of legal specialty, we do have a professional services budget where time constraints and large commitments of time over a short period of time do require us to hire outside counsel to represent the city's interests. The organizational chart consists of the city attorney, myself, assistant city attorney full-time, Kelly Schott, and legal secretary and a newly hired legal office assistant. Our core services generally as city attorney is through transactional advice as well as litigation defense on behalf of the city. The main concern for transactional is we provide legal counsel to the city council and all of the legislative bodies in the city, including the sanitation district and special department task force. We do provide advice, opinions to any of the officers, department heads, boards and commissions, and local bodies in very general areas of laws, in a very diverse area of laws, including land use, personnel, elections, conflict of interest, or any other concerns that may be of interest to the city. As part of the litigation aspect for the city attorney's office, we do prosecute and defend legal actions where the city is, including where individual city employees are named as well. We do also transactionally draft, review, approve all contracts, bonds, ordinances, policies, and resolutions on behalf of the city council and on behalf of the city. As part of the liability claims, we investigate and evaluate all claims and lawsuits against the city and work directly with risk management to hopefully reduce some of the claims before they reach litigation aspects. All public records requests are provided to the city attorney's office and reviewed, and we interact with all of the departments to provide all of the documents in a legal Core services continue. We assist staff in updates on all of the city policies, ordinance and agreements. We do enforce the provisions in municipal code as well. In the past few years, the biggest, the biggest department that has helped, the legal services of the city attorney's office is economic and community development because of the ongoing developments and also the dissolution of redevelopment as well. Citywide priorities. The city attorney's office will continue to provide legal representation to the council, its elected officials, and all of its legislative bodies. We also, again, will serve in the capacity of serving as general counsel to the successor agency, to the redevelopment agency, housing finance agency, as well as the capacity for North San Mateo County Sanitation District. 2017 and 2018 major accomplishments has actually been in the development phases where we were instrumental in working with the Department of Economic Community Development, the Department of Finance, as well as all of the division heads in retaining our redevelopment properties for future development. We were also successful in the recovery of the loan against the state Department of Finance. And we also received a recent ruling where we were able to recover an additional $1.2 million, totaling total about $36 million for the state of California. On top of that, we also had several litigation matters that did not reach litigation in the departments dealing with SEQA. We had SEQA litigation that did not ultimately become litigation, where the city attorney's office is heavily involved in making sure those matters do not become full-blown litigation matters to minimize costs. Goals and objectives, essentially with a two-person city attorney's office, we really do want to provide legal services. As part of that, we do meet with department heads regularly on a transactional basis so that we can minimize those costs. As everybody knows, litigation cost, whether we prevail or not, is very costly to the city. We work very closely with risk management in reviewing and analyzing so that we can look at city liability and exposure. And part of that is that we meet with the risk management department to assess the trends in exposure and see what we can do as a city to develop policies to reduce those risk and exposure. We also anticipate reviewing and preparing amendments to the municipal code. It's been an ongoing process for the city, and there's been many changes with federal and state compliance. So our department will definitely be involved in that process. Significant changes in the last budget, in line with the city reductions, the department reductions, our department restructured the administrative staff position due to retirement, which resulted in a lower classification position resulting in salary reduction. What we anticipate in the next budget is we do see an increase in risk management claims and litigation. We hope to hopefully in the next couple weeks conclude the dissolution of redevelopment and basically recover our loan payment as well as proceed with future development with our former redevelopment parcels. We do anticipate changes in the municipal code and ordinance updates. As we engage and embark with the current city council as well as potentially the new city council, we do anticipate at the policy direction that we see future changes in the municipal code and ordinances. This last slide does show the budget summary in general categories. This is provided to the city council if there's any questions.
So the project, the FTE for the city attorney office is like a four-position for the fiscal year 19 and 20. When you look at the city attorney budget, over 90% is budget for the employee salary and benefit is around close to $900,000 for each fiscal year. Services and supplies is only a very small percentage, it's around, it's around 10% of the general fund budget. And the $90,000 include $50,000 in professional service and another $30,000 that the city clerk obviously should, the city attorney obviously should buy like a professional books and other like law reference related material. So that make up the $90,000 in service and surprise.
So the increase in services and supplies, you're saying that's when you're contracting out, the 90, the 51 to 91,000?
Essentially, the 50,000 is because we didn't spend the entire 90,000. In fact, I think we had decreased our professional services from 75 to 50,000 for the reduction.
I would not know that from here.
Oh.
I mean, it says actual.
Actual, yeah.
So, okay. So it was 91, but you.
Yeah, it actually was a little bit higher. We like to have it there, just, you know, in the event that it's hard to anticipate what those professional services will be, just the nature of litigation.
Because of the fiscal year, hiring and that is true.
That is correct, right. Yeah, and then there's been certain instances where we had certain cases that just required us to have additional services.
Have you given any thought to having some kind of an internship program where you can reach out to the community and get, you know, some of our young legal minds some experience in the city attorney's office?
So we've had some instances where we've had some volunteers. I think the hardest part is because we're so small that we don't have sort of an elaborate training program. And a lot of times, the reason why, so I do have some budget for part-time help, and that's also been somewhat difficult to retain young lawyers to stay in that position primarily.
So the increase in services and supplies, you're saying that's when you're contracting out, the ninety, the fifty-one to ninety-one thousand?
Essentially, the fifty thousand is because we didn't spend the entire ninety thousand. In fact, I think we had decreased our professional services from seventy-five to fifty thousand for the reduction.
I would not know that from here.
Oh.
I mean, it says actual.
Actual, yeah.
So, okay. So it was ninety-one, but you...
Yeah, it actually was a little bit higher. We like to have it there just, you know, in the event that it's hard to anticipate what those professional services will be, just the nature of litigation.
Because of the fiscal year, it's higher than the...
That is correct, right. Yeah, and then there's been certain instances where we had certain cases that just required us to have additional services.
Have you given any thought to having some kind of an internship program where you can reach out to the community and get, you know, some of our young legal minds some experience in the, in the City Attorney's Office?
So we've had some instances where we've had some volunteers. I think the hardest part is because we're so small that we don't have sort of an elaborate training program. And a lot of times, the reason why, so I do have some budget for part-time help, and that's also been somewhat difficult to retain young lawyers to stay in that position primarily because it doesn't pay enough, I think, for professionals to be there in a short period of time. So the times that we've had to use some volunteer, it's difficult because I think a lot of the issues that come up isn't something that, where you have a case that you can stay on for a longer period of time, like, like a criminal case, for instance, then you can do some extensive legal research. We don't expend a lot of time spending a lot of memos and research. A lot of the questions that arise happen pretty quickly, or we have to draft documents in a shorter period of time. So sometimes we've reached out, I know that I had some volunteers where we've had, for instance, some bigger cases, and we can use the help there, but for most part, I think because of the timeframe, the professional services seem to be the work the best. And so it's hard to develop it as a program necessarily, because I don't know if I can give them sort of what they need.
No, but I, I think there is value in getting them the experience, even if it's them just wanting to hang around and make photocopies, because I think getting them exposed to the legal environment, even if their contribution isn't great.
Right.
But it serves a purpose, I think. So I would encourage that.
I found the sheet I was looking for.
Oh, good.
It was page, slide number forty-four, but that's okay, don't go to it, Lawrence, because...
I don't have that.
I know, you're not there, so I have none.
Okay. I don't have forty-four slides.
Any other questions for the City Attorney's Office?
The case trying to get our redevelopment money back was kind of unusual because most cities went out and borrowed that money from a lender, and we borrowed it from ourselves. So that put us in a special category, and the state at the beginning said, hell no, we're not giving it back. It's our money and we're keeping it. So there was a huge battle there to protect that money, and I don't know if you ever saw some of the documentation that Ms. Zimmerman put together, but, I mean, it was binders this thick and multiple binders to convince them. I don't know if they finally just gave up because they knew she was not going away and she was not going to stop fighting, and there were a number of other cities, not that many, but a few, that were in the same situation we were. So I say kudos and thank you very much, and I just want to make sure everyone knows about that work you did. It was very impressive, and thank you very much.
I do know how much it was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your leadership on that and getting us back the money that belonged to our city, so appreciate that. I think there's no other questions. Okay. Thank you.
Get a pizza now.
Next up is Human Resources, the Director, Shana Malpe.
Yeah, for God's sake, you guys, don't be shy, go get some food.
Shall I eat while I'm presenting?
Hey, if you can do it, I'll be impressed.
Maybe, maybe next time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council. I'm Shana Malpe, I'm the Director of Human Resources, and yesterday was my work anniversary. I've been with Daily City for thirteen years, thirteen lucky years. I also brought with me Bonnie Wu, who's our Senior Analyst in Human Resources. We're honored to, sorry, she's sleazy through, honored to share our budget for fiscal year nineteen and twenty. Let's go ahead and start with our org chart. You skipped me too. Oh, okay. So this is a fancy way of saying what we do, but we anticipate and effectively respond to the diverse needs of our employees, their families, other city departments, and the public by providing quality services to make our community a better place to live and work. Really, this is a fancy way of saying that we try our best to give excellent customer service to our employees, even in some hard times that we have, as you know. We, our departments, like Finance and City Attorney, really handle internal customers, so there are employees, our labor groups, our employees' family members, our retirees. As mentioned before, we have about four hundred and sixty full-time employees, three twenty-five hourly employees, depending on the season, recreation brings in a lot more during the summer, and four hundred retirees. So even though Daily City's workforce has sort of gotten smaller the last five or so years, we're still one of the larger cities on the peninsula and the county. So we are in HR relatively small department, there are five of us, but I believe that we still, even though that we're a fairly small group, we're able to provide good customer service. There's me as Director. Bonnie, Senior Management Analyst, she handles our budget, training and development, and helps me with the employee and labor relations. We have two Human Resources Analysts, Natalie Sakal handles our recruitment and our class and comp, and Leilani Ramos handles our workers' comp and our wellness program, and Martha Gutierrez, who is our HR Specialist, who handles our day-to-day functions and information and referral. But I'd like to think that if you call and one of us aren't there, we can get you in the right spot, because we kind of pride ourselves on cross-training and that kind of thing. Going next, so our core services, we are a full-service Human Resources Department. We administer health and welfare benefits. Wrong way.
It's a long night for you also.
No, it's too much. Yes.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, I was going to say, it got stuck on slide forty-four for some reason. We're at core service, yep, okay. So we are a full-service HR Department. We oversee employee health, welfare, and safety, workers' compensation, recruitment and selection, labor and employee relations, training and development, class and comp, and employee recognition and communications. As you all know, we manage the bargaining process for eleven labor groups, and we, once those, the bargaining groups have finished their bargaining sessions and we have new contracts, then HR makes sure that those contracts are followed appropriately and interpreted correctly. We also work with the management and our City Attorney's Office and the unions and employees to resolve issues at the lowest level, the least detrimental level to the city. You may notice that not a lot of employee issues as far as discipline or other kinds of things come to the council, because I think the department heads and HR and the City Attorney really try to work with the unions to come up with a solution before it gets to you. And as part of our employee recognition, you were all at our barbecue, which is right around the corner, and we also have our Foghorn Employee Newsletter. So those are some of our services. How we support, how does the Human Resources Department support citywide priorities? Because we're an internal, we handle mostly internal clients, being employees and retirees and council and other department heads, we really are focused on what is currently number seven of the city priorities, which is government operations. So we're really trying to identify opportunities for greater cost effectiveness and efficiency. So in doing that, we look at continuing to prepare the next generation of employees. It was kind of evident in the recent appointment of our Police Chief, as well as, is it announced yet, our Water, Wastewater Director was soon to be, sorry, that was on TV, but grown in-house, so we try to do that as much as possible. We do work with other agencies to provide services at a low cost. For instance, we are part of the San Mateo County Regional Training Consortium, which was developed about seven or eight years ago, where instead of providing all the training in-house, we have a pool of resources. Almost every city in the county is involved. Sometimes I teach, sometimes the city manager teaches to provide training at a low cost. And we're constantly looking at ways to, opportunities for shared services. We also try to actively recruit and refer qualified and diverse candidates to departments within the city and promote the city of Daily City as a great place to work with a variety of career possibilities, and including outreach programs to better market and brand city employment, including what the Vice Mayor was saying, some sort of liaison would be nice for not just the City Attorney's Office, but with, you know, citywide, and we're working with Stephen Stolti on maybe doing some more internships this summer. Okay, how else do we support citywide priorities? We promote employee development by providing technical training opportunities, employment issue updates, professional development. We continue to support employee wellness initiatives, a little bit more on that later, including the Walk-a-Thon, Healthy Recipe Showdown, Lunch and Learn Center. We have a September Employee Wellness Month, monthly fitness sessions such as Urban Cycle, which is really popular. We continue to do exit interviews. We want to know from people who are leaving, either they're retiring or resigning, or we send out surveys to find out what they liked, what they didn't like. And we are continuing to work with Stephen, the Sustainability Coordinator. He's been very helpful to help develop and implement electronic processes for our functions. Okay. Accomplishments, twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, we did twenty-eight recruitments. We actually have not quite finished, that's just so far this fiscal year. We had thirty-two new hires in twenty seventeen, forty-seven employees attended regional consortium trainings. We completed ten, as you know, negotiations sessions with ten unions. And happy to announce, since there was a kind of a good discussion earlier on grants and grant opportunities, it was a modest grant, but we did, we were the recipient of the League of California Cities, Cities for Workforce Health Wellness Grant. One hundred and fifty-eight organizations, both private and public, did apply, and we were one of five to receive it. Very modest, it's only $5,000, but it was something, and they had very stringent criteria, and they continue to have really stringent criteria as far as how we can use the money. But we are using it to rebrand our safety and wellness program. We have a really robust committee, there are over twenty people on the committee that are representatives of each department, and they are very devoted to looking at, you know, not only ways to be more healthy in the workplace, but also how to prevent injuries. So they kind of look at, anonymously look at some of the injuries that have taken place to see work, we could possibly do more training, and we definitely could not do that without our employees. So anyway, the $5,000 is going to go toward those efforts, so. And we will continue to look for grant opportunities in the future. So the goals and objectives for nineteen and twenty, again, we'll go through another round of negotiations with eleven unions. We will work with departments, including working closely with the City Attorney's Office, to resolve employee, employer problems at the lowest and least detrimental level, provide services in a manner that fosters the overall best interests of the city, including things like trying to expedite recruitment processes, even though it's sometimes very difficult for recruitment to go expeditiously when it's in the civil service, but we'll do our best to try to tighten those timelines. We will be updating our anti-harassment policy to comply with, really with the new legal requirements, as well as it's time to do that. And we will continue to work with the city departments to promptly report and reduce workplace injuries, but I do have to say that our departments are really good about being timely about the workers' compensation reporting. And then here's just a, this is just a continuation of our rebranding our employee safety and wellness program with our grant, and to continue to promote a healthier and safer workplace. This is a picture of last year's Walk-a-Thon. We will send out a notice to you all for the next one, which will be May twenty-fifth. It's usually a good turnout, and it's usually fun. Significant changes that really aren't significant changes, I sort of just honestly felt compelled to put something on here, but we will have some increase in pre-employment costs associated with new hires, turnover, and retirement. Anytime we have to replace somebody, there's pre-employment costs and medical costs and fingerprinting and all that, so those tend to go up each year. And then we got that grant that we hadn't expected, so you actually accepted the grant money last Monday. Okay, this is a slide that is very complicated. I think that the next slide is a budget summary by category. I find it complicated because it includes three different budget categories. It includes our general fund, our self-insurance for workers' comp, and our health and wellness program, and I will explain it as best as possible in the next couple of slides, but I want to point out that in the total expenditures in the third column on the bottom, where it says proposed, and it's five million four hundred and seventy-six, that 4.3 million of those expenditures are for our workers' compensation program. So I don't, that number looks large, but it's largely due to the workers' comp program. And the next slide, we'll get into it a little bit more. So you can see that in our general fund is, you know, going up modestly, and it really is mirroring other departments going up a few percent, and we'll get into that in the next slide. The self-insurance you'll see is really an out-of-control cost for the city, so that, you know, it's medical costs, it's cost of injury, cost of permanent and temporary disability, all of those things. Our insurance premiums is probably the most costly, and health and wellness is just a category for our safety committee that we just separate out. This budget summary is more accurately reflective of Human Resources operations, and you can just see that the total expenditures has gone up, it'll be 4.8% in nineteen and 3.5% in twenty, and that's based largely on salary increases and benefits. Some professional services that may go up, we lease our space, so that went up pretty significantly, it's going to go up in twenty nineteen. So that's, that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for my colleagues?
You know, one of the, you know, one of the concerns I always have is the morale of the staff and how we're doing as, as an employer and having all these workers. I was wondering how, and this probably doesn't have anything to do with the budget, but, and I'm certainly not proposing any increase to accommodate this purpose, but what, what do the various departments do when it comes to things like, you know, a Christmas celebration? Is it mostly an individual department thing, or have we ever been in a situation where we have like a massive, all-city-wide party where everybody contributes to like, let's say, a Christmas party, something that get...
It could be holiday.
Or a holiday party, whatever.
I know you.
So that's why my concern is, I don't get the sense that we ever do something like that, and is there, do people ask about it? Because from most of the corporations or companies I work for, there's something to look forward to every year, and we don't have anything.
Well, we have, we have one event, which is the barbecue, and that, and that's for employee awards, so you're right, it's not, it's not super festive, I guess. We used to do caroling some years ago, and it's certainly something we can look into. Again, given the fiscal constraints, it would have to be creative, you know, even if it looked like a potluck or something like that, but if that's something that council's interested in pursuing, it would have to be something like a holiday, it couldn't be a specific, you know, like Christmas or anything like that.
Right, I mean, do you get the sense that the employees want something like that?
I get the sense, I don't really know, that's a good question. I know that we have a really big turnout for our barbecue. People at least seem to enjoy that event, so it makes sense that they would enjoy another event that maybe isn't associated with the Employee Service Awards. So it's definitely worth exploring. I know that our departments do a really nice job of doing that individually. I believe each department really handles that well and tries to take care of staff as much as possible during the holidays, but I imagine if it's a little bit of time off work and a free lunch, that it's probably going to be, you know, well-received, so.
Thank you.
No questions for me, Councilor?
He's waiting.
You're all out, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Now we have the Department of Finance and Administrative Services.
Tonight I'm presenting the budget for the Finance and Administrative Services Department. The mission statement of the Finance Department is committed to provide accurate and timely financial information, providing high-quality and reliable IT service, safeguarding city assets, and providing excellent service to both internal and external customers. This is the current organization chart of the Finance Department. The department is divided into four divisions. The first division is the Administrative Division, which is responsible for putting together the city budget. We also provide service on the risk management. And the payroll supervisor, Danica, is also working under the payroll division. On the accounting side, we have the Financial Service Manager, True Accountant, True Accountant Coffee, and For Accountant Free, For Accountant Two. On the utility billing side, we have Nike, seven staff members working the utility billing. On the information technology, we have 11 employees working in the IT area. This is the current organization chart of a total staffing of 33 FTE. This is the proposed organization chart for fiscal year 2019 and '20, and staff request the council to consider reclassify one PC land technician to a senior PC land technician. There will be no change in the staffing, just a reclassification, and I'll provide the council of the fiscal impact in the next few slides. Core services of the Finance Department include accounting, budgeting, business license, central service, information service, payroll, risk management, and utility billing. Finance Department monitor physical activity and provide, and provide financial reports to all city departments. We also serve as a resource to city council and city management in financial affairs. We also provide analytical support and financial advisory to all city departments on how to manage the budget. In addition, Finance coordinated short-term and long-term financial planning for the entire city. Finance Department managed and coordinated the city budget and providing accounting support to all city departments. The Information Service Department managed the city voice and data system and ensured maximum performance of the technology system. The utility billing division performed accurate and timely reading and billing of utility service and looked at new ways on how to make the bill payment, bill payment more easier. The Risk Management Division assists department to minimize insurance claims against the city and protect city assets and infrastructure. Some of the accomplishments for the current fiscal year, and we received the GFOA award for the Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting in Fiscal Year 2016. We also received the Distinguished Budget Award for the Fiscal Year 2017 and 2018 budget. And we successfully implemented Government Accounting Standard Board procurement. And all the mandated financial reports will complete and file on time. And in addition, Finance completed solid waste study and implement the new solid waste rate effective October 2017. Now we look at the goal and objective for the next two fiscal year. Accounting and Budget Division will prepare the comprehensive annual financial report, and will also put together the biennial budget for the GFOA award. We will update the cost allocation plan, will continue streamlining operation, and improve the workflow within the Finance Department. In addition, Finance will also upgrade to a one-solution financial system. This will be a major upgrade from the current financial system, and will also provide training to all the end user throughout the entire city. The utility billing division will upgrade to a new UB system and also provide training to staff in the Finance Department. And the Risk Management will administrate the self-insurance fund and recommend appropriate reserve level. Information Service will manage the city technology system and maintain a network uptime of 99.7%. And in addition, the staff in the ISD will keep customer support appointment on time 99% of the time. Some of the major changes from the prior budget, we request the council to reclassify one PC land technician to a senior PC land technician in the fiscal year 2019 and '20 budget. The projected fiscal impact will be $6,000 in fiscal year 2019 and $13,000 in fiscal year '20. The PC land technician has been working on a temporary assignment and supervised the customer support session of the Information Service Division for the last two years. He supervised the health care support for the entire city, including lots of like special system for the police department. He also managed the city network voice and data communication. Now we look at the, the proposed budget for the 2019 and '20. No change in the proposed staffing with the classification, so the proposed staffing for the next two fiscal year is 32.83 FTE, and the projected revenue increased by 24% to 6.1 million in fiscal year 2019. This is due to increasing service billing from, from funds within the Finance Department. On the expenditure side, total expenditure increased by 4.6 million, 4.6% to 10.1 million in fiscal year 2019. The change is mainly due to salary and benefit adjustment, resulting in cow purse employer contribution rate increase and the increase in the debt service payment. The other operating account remain threat for the next two years. And I'll turn over to our senior management analyst, Jason, for more clarification.
So, the next slide will see a summary breakdown by fund, and within the Finance Department, there are six different funds. The first one would be the General Fund. For that one, increases only by about 10% to 2.5 million and 2.6 million in fiscal year 20. The second fund is the water utility, the utility billing, which is in the Water Fund. That, that expenditure increases slightly by .1 million or so first year and .2 million the second year. The third fund that is in the Finance is the Central Services. That expenditure pretty much stays a little flat, maybe a $30,000 increase. The fourth fund is the PBX, the phone system, and that one has been, is going to decrease a little bit because less, less expenditures projected for the future. The big, the biggest fund is the IT, the Information Services in Fund 55. The expenditures of 3.4 million in fiscal year 19 and 3.4 again in fiscal year 20. And the last fund is Fund 58, which is the self-insurance fund or the general liability. Expenditure is expected about 1.9 to 2 million. So the total expenditures, total up to 1.2 and, I mean, 10.2 and 10.5. And the final slide is the General Fund portion. This is where most of Finance is located. The funded, the funded staffing remains the same at 13.4. Revenue is a small 120,000 for each year. Salary and benefits increase by about $200,000 for the fiscal year 2019 and another 100,000 for 2020. Service supplies remain about the same at about 130,000, and the total expenditures of 2.5 and 2.6 in each of the next fiscal year.
I'll point out the, I'll point out the service and surprise, the $100,000. Out of that is $90,000 is for the interim and final audit, so that means a, a big proportion of the service and surprise we budget for the audit expense. So it's around $90,000 for each, $90,000 for each fiscal year.
And the last slide is the non-departmental summary. This is where all the revenue comes in for the General Fund. Taxes, we estimate to be 61 million for the fiscal year 2019 and 63 million for the fiscal year 2020. License and permits remain about 300,000 for each of the fiscal years. Rent and interest will increase a little bit by 670,000 for fiscal year 19 and the same for fiscal year 20. Miscellaneous revenue, those, that is the excess ERAF. That's about the 3.3 million for each of the fiscal years.
And of the 3.3 million, we budget 3 million for fiscal year 19 and another 3 million for fiscal year 2020.
And then the benefits is essentially the purse payment for the unfunded, 3 and 1/2 million for the fiscal year 19 and then 3.7 for 20. And then the total expenditures for the non-departmental is 5.5 million for the first year and 5.7 for the second year.
So for the non-departmental is all the citywide revenue and expenditure that does not belong to a specific department is all budget here. Like, for example, all the sales tax revenue does not belong to any city department, like the property tax, UUT, all the miscellaneous revenue throughout the entire city, those license and permit, then that means it's all reprogrammed together in the non-departmental. This is the one that when I show the council on the General Fund budget, most of the General Fund budget is coming from the non-departmental. But there are some revenue, like ECD, the building fee, engineering fee, those will be budgeted specifically for the economic or public work department. Question from the council?
Yes, I have two.
Okay, please.
Okay, first one is on the senior PC land technician, the promotion.
Uh, is it-
Or reclassification.
Is it reclassification?
Who makes the determination as to who should get that position if you have three of them right now?
Because right now is we have Nike, one position has been weakened, and the one that we're planning to reclassify is the most senior one in the office. He's the one that pretty much know all the system within the police department. That type of skill is extremely valuable to this organization because we are a full-service police department. Because if, you know, if he found another job, then that means we pretty much lost a lot of Nike information, technology, and computer support to the police department. And we don't determine that. The other, the other person, yes, is qualified, but work as a Nike different capacity within the organization.
Well, okay, I, I, I want to understand that, and, but what I'm hearing is it's based upon seniority, based upon-
It's not, not only based on seniority, it's based on the job skill set that person have within the organization.
Okay, I'm just wondering if that's been documented so that if anybody wants to apply for that position, he or she would have to show the requirements of the specifications for that specific classification. And if that has not been developed, and we're just promoting someone, I just have concern about that, so it's just a thought. The other question was the increase on IT. I see the cost up to about $3.4 million, and is that for like new systems, updates in computers, purchase of additional computers? Uh, it was one of the slides-
Slide 14.
Fund 55. I'm just wondering, what does that consist of? Information services?
It major, it has the same category, I'm just a general fund as an example, it's pretty much breakdown into the same category. This includes salary and benefit, and biggest chunk of them is the salary and benefit. It's the, because when you look at the IT, we have 11 person, pretty much like as the, pretty much like over like half of the budget is the service and surprise. And on the service and surprise, we do have a lot of Nike equipment that we have to maintain, and a lot of server that we have to Nike budget for the ongoing annual maintenance. So those are the biggest, biggest chunk of the IT budget.
Okay, so in the upgrades of computers, do we have, I, in all these budget presentations, I haven't seen anything yet about the depreciation or the, how you say, getting rid of old equipment? Do we sell it to bring money back in, or do we just give it away? I, I see a spend, 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 but what do we do with some old equipment? Computer that's five years old could be very useful to some others.
A very good example, I just Nike pool IT. Like, for example, we have Nike depreciation on the phone system. Like, for example, the current year depreciation is around $25,000, and then by '20, '20, the equipment will be fully depreciated, so that means like, in each of the city budgets, especially like IT, we do have the depreciation line item in the budget. Another very good example is when you look at the, the vehicle service fund in the public work, they have Nike depreciation as well. But for most other city departments, they don't have that much equipment that is depreciate. But when you look at the water and wastewater, because of all the infrastructure that they have, they do have Nike a depreciation schedule, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, I just want to make sure we are just maximizing, especially a depreciation scale, schedule, because I know servers can be very, very expensive as well, and just to give them, I'm glad it's being looked at, that's, that's-
Councilmember, you are absolutely correct, and it's, it's essential for the city to be able to depreciate those costs over time, so we certainly are. I will tell you, though, that this city is severely underfunded for technology. We are so behind the eight ball in terms of upgrading technology across all city operations. I'm a firm believer, and especially because I have seen in other cities, as I've traveled across the country and around the world, how technology can be used in some of the most productive ways to reduce costs and prove efficiencies and to establish more innovative approaches to the delivery of government services. Unfortunately, we're just not in a position where we have been able to invest in technology the way that other cities have. Many of our city departments operate with equipment that has essentially outlived its useful life in terms of being the latest technology, but it still works. So essentially, in every department, we use technology until it doesn't work anymore. And by the time it doesn't work anymore, then we dispose of it as we do all surplus property. But I can't think of a place where, when we replace technology, that, that the equipment is still so good that we, it has a dollar value that we could ascribe to it and therefore that we can market it somewhere, you know, or, or donate it to, to a nonprofit or something like that. It's usually been so well-worn that it just, it's not really valuable to anyone.
Ms. Montell, I really appreciate that, because the only reason why I questioned IT, because I wanted to hear that we are going to get new computers, but I didn't hear that. And I would definitely attest to your statement, because that computer upstairs that I use, that must be over 10 years old, but it works, so hopefully as we move on.
And we use equipment like that until it doesn't work anymore.
Gotcha.
Vice Mayor?
So, you bring up a good point, and what I was wondering is the, is there, what philosophy or under what principle do we operate in terms of- what philosophy or under what principle do we operate in terms of, do we buy equipment versus leasing equipment and the, the advantages of, you know, do we really need to own things like software or, uh, computer? Or is it, it's something that, is it something that we should be thinking about? Is it more economical and efficient to just lease? And, and, and do we do that now, I guess what I'm asking?
We, we do not lease, we purchase equipment because, as I said, we maximize the use of that equipment. We get every dollar out of it that we pay into it.
Yeah, but technology is moving so fast.
True, but we can't afford to upgrade technology, literally cannot afford to upgrade technology as fast as it is evolving. And in respect to software systems, we have to buy licenses for software. And much of our software, many of our programs is, they're proprietary. So we have to have licensing for those kinds of, of software systems that we are, and applications that we're using. Some of them in some departments, very specialized for the activities within that department. So it really, um, you know, there's really no way around it. We really, but, but the unfortunate part is what I said to Councilmember Sylvester is that we just don't have the money to upgrade it as regularly as we would like and that's across the board. I waited a very long time to have my computer upgraded. Because there are needs in some of the departments where they, you know, they have a need to replace it sooner than, than others. And so, um, the replacement process that we go through allows for a certain number of computers and equipment to be replaced each year. But it's not nearly enough to meet citywide needs. And it's not enough to get us over the hump of just replace, you know, just barely being able to provide computers to the point where we can become a smart city and have all the technology and all the applications that we want that would help to reduce, um, the, the cost and effectiveness of certain service deliveries by being able to do what we do differently. Basically, all the applications that we have are, are regular day-to-day, most of it's word processing, Excel, PowerPoint presentations and that kind of thing. Where the real technology investment is being made is in places like water and wastewater where they specifically to run that plant have to have high-level systems. But even in those departments, we've waited extra years in order to replace the SCADA equipment and other kinds of things that really would help to improve their overall operation. It took us a very long time because we did the work in-house to implement our, our G I S system. We did it with our own staff and we had some outside consulting, but basically we did it ourselves. And, and many of the things that we do, we approach it that way in order to save money.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm wondering if in general, for example, just even things like cars, are we better off leasing versus buying with all the upkeep and maintenance? And I, and I apply that to, to computers and everything else. I mean, I, is there, has there been an analysis done to see if that's the better route to take? When we're talking about trying to be efficient and keeping up with technology? That's what I'm.
You know, I, I believe that we have investigated the difference in costs between leasing things and purchasing them. And because of the number of pieces of equipment that we buy, we, we are at that level where we have the economy of scale that it's, it makes more sense for us to purchase them than it does to lease them. We end up paying more in the long term for leasing because of interest than if we just purchase them outright.
I know.
Because it's the interest cost with leasing that gets you.
Gets you.
Also, usually, um, one of the advantages of leasing is that you're always with the latest and greatest. We can't afford the latest and greatest and so it makes more sense to actually buy things and in the case of vehicles, drive them into the ground or computers. It would be nice if we could afford to lease and have the latest and greatest upgraded every year or two. But that's a whole nother level of expense.
Yeah, I just.
And I know that you guys have looked at that in the past because we talked about it, I don't know, maybe twelve years ago or so.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to be confident that, you know, if, what is really more efficient and in, in terms of our short term? I understand long-term it will be, but can we save money and can we, we, can we benefit from this philosophy of leasing for now? Because we are sort of, we're in a crunch. And so I'd like to just see that discussion to keep going and to, to analyze if, if we need to change the way we do things.
So it depends on what product we are looking at. Like for example, the P C is a very good example because right now the P C, the price is so low. The all-in-one machine that we have right now is around a thousand dollar a piece. So I mean, it makes sense for the city to purchase the P C. But for some of the very high and very expensive equipment like a fire truck, that may cost up to one point five million. So in that case, if we want to improve the cash flow, then we might want to like a, list a fire truck rather than pay a one point five million out of the budget in order to purchase. It depends on which product that we are planning to purchase. I mean, there is a different decision on that we have to make in order to maximize the, the, uh, the, the efficiency of using that equipment.
One of the things, on a final note, one of the things that I've talked to the finance director about in terms of, of the direction of the city's information services division is we really need, we've had a vacant position, the information services manager position has been vacant for some time. And in part, it was because I was trying to cobble together the necessary funds to upgrade that position to really a chief information officer, to allow a higher level position than just maintaining the basic systems and the servers and that kind of thing and migrating to new software and that. But to really have someone who had the broader and higher level capability of looking citywide and working with the department heads to establish a technology master plan for where we should be going and being able to work with each of the departments and creating a user group of each departments that would be ongoing to help support the implementation of a technology master plan. Unfortunately, um, with, so, being here in, you know, adjacent to Silicon Valley, trying to hire someone at that level is an enormous cost. Because people that, who have that skill set that we really need, they can demand whatever salary they want in Silicon Valley. So when I say I was trying to cobble together the funds to upgrade that position, Lawrence and I were just talking about that again a few days ago, about the importance of that and, and having to figure out a way that we can put a proposal together to bring to the council to look at that. Because I think that position, upgrading it to a chief information officer position, that would be essentially a, a high level, like, you know, almost department head level because they would be working with all the department heads to identify information needs in the short term and the long term. I think that could be one of the best investments that the city could make in that kind of a position. To be able to really do a good master plan, figure out, answer questions like you've asked about if we're going to replace, you know, servers and all that, is it better to lease or is it better to buy them? Should we do this? Should we do that? And work with each individual department to determine, to determine their ongoing information needs three years, five years, ten years, so that we can then begin to budget for it over that period of time and really have a more comprehensive program. We haven't had anybody at that level and that's why we've just been doing the basics of replacing computers as they wear out and, you know, and that kind of thing. You know, moving to the cloud for storage was probably the biggest thing we'd ever done and that is not really the most innovative, um, uh, you know, uh, means for, uh, storage today. Everybody does that, but when we did it, it was a big deal. So I still believe that that's a really important move in the right direction for the city and that if there's any way to be able to fund, you know, an upgrade of that position and reclassify it to a chief information officer or some other much higher level position, that it will be a, a well-spent investment.
Ms. Martell, I'm glad you said it. I mean, I, 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 I looked at, uh, I looked at all, basically the staff and, you know, when I first came on board. And I have to give kudos to Lawrence because to be the director of finance, but yet to have the, the, some knowledge and the prowess to know something about I T, that should be a different function. As far as I'm concerned, Lawrence should be the CFO. You need a C I O. And you basically, Ms. Martell, is the C E O. And in absence of that, it becomes difficult because to try to spread someone thin to do both parts and you got, the, his subordinates probably know more than him. And that's the sign of a good boss is you don't have to know everything, but you surround yourself by the people who do. And I think having a separate entity such as that, that would take some of the pressure off and that's all they concentrate on. So, good to know, I would support it.
Thank you.
Um, I do have a couple of questions. It was on the organizational chart. I noticed on page four, it said point two management analyst. I was wondering why it was just a point two. I see a point eight management analyst for risk management, is that like one position?
Position is between the, the general fund and then the risk management.
Then on.
Same person, multiple functions.
Okay, great, just wanted to clarify that. Then you said there was an upgrade to the I F A S one solution financial system. And that's one of the items and objectives for the upcoming fiscal year. What does that entail?
So what happened is we have been using the current version of the financial system, the I F S seven point nine for almost ten years. And it's pretty much like it's out of the support for the next two or three years. So we, uh, we presented to the council last year for the funding to upgrade from the current version to a newer version called the one solution. And we don't have the budget to purchase a new enterprise resource management E L P system. So we have choose the upgrade rather than a, a new system. So this is the most economic way to maximize the city budget. Because if we are looking at the full E L P, you'll cost at least one point five to two million. For the current upgrade, you only cost around three to four hundred thousand dollar only. So it's like a, the best use of the very limited resource within the budget.
Thank you very much.
And if you were to go the full-blown system and if we did purchase it, could our legacy systems handle it? If you were to go the full-blown version, the different version of the software, sometimes, sometimes that entail greater processing power and we have legacy systems, do you have a system that would be able to run it even if we were to get it?
Yes, with the I F S one solution, it required the city to purchase a true new server in order to do that. But it's at a minimum cost rather than a full E L P. We look at the true server cost less than around fifty thousand dollar. So it's a very effective way to manage a very limited resource.
Thank you very much. Okay, no other questions? I think that's it.
Final one will be the city council and the city manager budget.
Thank you.
It's all the way back at the beginning.
Okay, so, um, at this time, we're going to finish up the evening with a review of the city council and city manager department budget. We're going to start with the council's mission statement, which is that the council is committed to addressing the diverse and changing needs of residents, businesses and employees. And you accomplish your mission through effective policy direction, which results in the efficient delivery of quality municipal services provided with a human touch. And that mission statement, you've probably noticed it on the wall in our offices. This is the organizational chart, which owes the city council, providing overall policy direction to your boards and commissions, as well as to your two employees, the city manager and the city attorney. The core services of the council are to, to set city policies and priorities through your various legislative actions and to provide direction to the city manager and the city attorney to effectively implement your policy decisions throughout the municipal corporation. In terms of citywide priorities, and these tie back to the earlier discussion around the guiding principles and the citywide priorities. The council's priorities are economic development and revenue enhancement to ensure long-term fiscal sustainability, public safety services that support a safe community environment, the continued development of quality affordable housing, transportation, traffic and pedestrian improvements to ensure community, um, circulation. I should say to ensure safe community circulation, sorry. Infrastructure investment improvements that support public health and safety. So that relates to our water and wastewater systems and our streets and, and roads. Environmental sustainability through climate action planning and the greening of municipal operations. Leisure services that enhance quality of life for residents, government operations that are effective and cost-efficient and community engagement through constituent outreach and volunteer participation. During fiscal years seventeen and eighteen, the council supported the city manager in the implementation of long-term fiscal sustainability plan. You approved new multi-year labor contracts, approved a solid waste franchise fee adjustment to the Republic Services franchise for waste collection during rate period two. This was following the awarding of a new franchise to Republic Services in the prior budget. You authorized, uh, that's a repeat, sorry about that. Authorized multi-year contracts with labor groups. And you approved a new bicycle and pedestrian master plan with funding from a sustainable communities grant. So among the goals and objectives moving forward are to provide ongoing leadership and direction to the city manager in the implementation of council policy decisions and the city's long-term fiscal sustainability plan. To ensure an appropriate balance between the services to provide, that are provided to the community and the stewardship over limited financial resources. Supporting the development of quality affordable housing. Working with local businesses to create a business-friendly environment and foster economic development.
Now we look at the budget summary for the fiscal year nineteen and twenty. There are five full-time, five-fund position in the council budget. The salary and benefit is projected at under eighty-five thousand dollar. The seven thousand dollar service and surprise, this include a two thousand dollar in marriage reimbursement and five thousand dollar in miscellaneous office expense. Just like you purchased office surprise is coming from the service and surprise. And the other charges, this include twenty thousand dollar in travels and meeting and fifteen thousand dollar in education and training. Any question on the budget summary?
The fixed charges, the fixed charges?
The fixed charges, this include the, there's a $24,000 fixed charges from the building maintenance, and $4,000 from the information service department. So those are the two major fixed charges.
Now, who are these, who are these folks?
This is the city council.
That's us.
City council.
That would be you.
Okay, I, I just thought I'd ask. Looks like every year, the, it says salaries and benefits is going down. I thought it was just a stipend, but it looks like it's going down. Was, oh, budget, actual, okay. I think I, yeah, it looks like it's going down. Budgeted fiscal year 2017 was, the budget was 192, and for 2019, it's proposed at 185. And in 2020, it looks like it goes back up a little bit. I mean, I don't quite understand. I mean, not that I'm saying I'm wanting more, but is there a method to the madness here?
When I look at the budget for the 19, the salary is budget at $91,000. But for the fiscal year 2017, the salary is budget, the actual salary is $101,000. That may be retirement, including some one-time payout, something like that, is it? The group insurance in 2017 is $74,000, and in 2019 is $66,000. So those might be the two major area that account for the variance.
That takes up for the $10,000, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And Mayor had made mention, it kind of flew over my head, what's the fixed charges?
Those are the fixed charges coming from the internal service, when the building maintenance, they calculate how much they charge to each department based on the square footage each department used.
So that's like the custodial services?
Custodial services.
That kind of thing.
Whatever.
Building maintenance.
Yes.
Because of group insurance? I'm sorry, I'm going back to, it's going down because of group insurance? That's what someone mentioned and on...
Yes.
And stuff like, so can you explain that?
Like the cafeteria plan, so the report of the group insurance, like health insurance.
Okay. So it's being decreased?
The salaries and benefits were being decreased because...
Well, it would depend on if everyone is taking it or not. So, for example, I'm imagining that previously, the council members who retired, or, excuse me, or, well, retired, yes, left, they didn't run for reelection, may have been taking it, and now perhaps not all of you are taking it. Health insurance, group health insurance.
Oh, okay.
Again, the group health insurance is also based on, like, uh...
I don't, you don't take it, you don't take it.
I don't get it. I mean, I have health insurance from elsewhere.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. So, but previously, the council members who stepped down, they did take it. They did have health coverage.
With the actual...
So that would have been at a higher rate because more of them would have been taking it, and now fewer are taking it.
So the actual group insurance for 2017 is around $74,000. And the project for the current fiscal year is roughly around $73,000 to $75,000. And based on the latest information that we get from payroll, so we project is around $66,000 for the next fiscal year. So that's why you see a slight drop in the salary and benefit. Because on the cafeteria plan, you have like a different tier. So it's different tier, we have like a different amount.
And so, what's in front of us for fiscal year 2017? Is that fiscal year 2016, 2017?
The first column is the 16 and 17. The second column is the current fiscal year 17 and 18, yeah.
And that includes our pension payment as well, right? Because I also don't take that.
Yes.
I already got a pension, and I said, I'd have to live to be, what, 87 to make even? So I said, I'll just take the money. I need it now at 87. I'm not gonna know what to do with the money.
Other charges?
Other charges?
Charges, the $35,000 breakdown is $20,000 is budget for travel and meetings. And $15,000...
The progress seminar, the mega cities.
Is budget for education and training. So that's the council training and travel budget.
So it's the various trainings and sessions and meetings that you go to, where we register you or reimburse you?
Y'all don't miss anything, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
So far. No, I think we got more, right?
We do.
One final. Now, the city manager's biennial budget for fiscal years 19 and 20. Start with the mission statement of the city manager's department, which is to provide strategic leadership to support the council in its policymaking responsibilities, and guide the municipal corporation to deliver high-quality, cost-efficient, and effective services and programs that address community needs. The organizational chart shows the staff that are direct reports to the city manager, including an assistant city manager, which is a currently vacant position. Within the city manager's office, the city manager has an administrative secretary that is currently being filled on an acting basis by the senior executive assistant. And so that position is currently vacant, but we have a new executive assistant as well. And the reason why there is a vacant position is that recognizing that the city council will be, in the coming months, appointing a new city manager, I felt that it was important for a new city manager to be able to select their own administrative secretary. And if that new manager elects to make the acting admin secretary permanent, they would be free to do that. And if they chose to recruit, to bring in someone else, then the acting administrative secretary would revert back into the senior executive assistant position. And that seemed like a reasonable kind of thing to do for a new manager, to be able to create their own team. In addition, whoop, go back. In my office, we have the Community Sustainability Program, which is filled by the Sustainability Coordinator, Stephen Stolti. The council may recall that when we renewed the franchise with Republic Services, one of the conditions of that renewal was for them to fund a sustainability coordinator, whose job in part, it would be to monitor their franchise, to ensure that they were in compliance with all of the regulations that are, had been established in order to increase our diversion rate, improve our recycling programs, and to ensure that going forward, Republic Services would remain in compliance with all ongoing conditions of their franchise. Stephen has done an outstanding job. And in addition to that, he has grown our sustainability program in many other areas as well. So we have greatly benefited from that position. We also are responsible for community engagement in our office. And historically, the assistant city manager has led that effort. But with the vacancy in that position, Mr. Stolti has stepped up, and he has assisted with a broad array of community engagement activities, including managing all of our social media outreach. He is the one who produces the electronic newsletter, the daily new, Daily Wire, once a month. And he helps to support the quarterly daily news, community newsletter publication. So he's involved in a great number of areas in community engagement as well.
Who manages the website?
Well, from a technical perspective, the Information Services Division staff. Each department is responsible for their own webpage, and my office is responsible for managing the main webpage that has the links to all the current events and activities and that kind of thing. But each department is required to have someone on their staff to refresh information on their individual pages. But that is part of our community engagement responsibility. In addition, you can see all the other city departments listed that are all direct reports to the city manager. So it's my responsibility to oversee through direction and support of the staff in those departments, the mission of each one of the operating departments in the city. The core services of the city manager's department include implementing city council policies and priorities, the effective management and oversight of the municipal corporation, prudent fiscal management and accountability, efficient intergovernmental relations, that means working with other cities, the county, and the state on a variety of issues that affect local government, training development and support for a skilled workforce, economic development and business support, community building and civic participation, public communications and outreach, management of the Community Services Center contract with the Daily City Partnership, and community sustainability and resilience. Support for citywide priorities is offered in a number of different areas, including supporting organizational capacity to provide existing services to the community, maintaining efficient and a cost-effective delivery of all city services, providing leadership and support for organizational innovation to promote a creative, effective, and skilled workforce, supporting the expansion of community sustainability and climate action programs and services, monitoring community satisfaction with city services, including seeking community input, engaging the community in a variety of meetings and other kinds of events and activities, and soliciting suggestions from the public. An example of that is the recent community meetings that we've had, educating the public and soliciting their input about the potential for implementing a cannabis ordinance. And finally, to support long-range strategic planning with the city council and the community. We also provide leadership and guidance to enhance the city's ability to attract and retain the optimum balance of commercial and residential development. So I work with developers and the staff to identify potential projects that will benefit the city, work collaboratively with the Chamber of Commerce and other local businesses to support and maintain a proactive business environment, evaluate proposals for participation in shared regional service approaches to achieve a greater economy of scale and produce cost savings, sustain efforts to address long-term infrastructure and capital improvement needs that are so critical to the city's ongoing delivery of services, maintaining organizational accountability and transparency through increased public access to online information, cable casting and video streaming of city council, commission, and other civic meetings, and utilizing a variety of social media platforms to outreach to the public. We encourage community education and involvement through the daily news, our quarterly community newsletter, and the city's electronic newsletter. We support a robust social media program to broaden public awareness about important issues as they arise, and also to expand the city's brand and profile in the community. Among the accomplishments during fiscal years 17 and 18, we successfully managed the transition of police dispatch services to Samhita County Public Safety Communications. We transitioned into company 95 and maintained quality emergency response services. I appointed a new police chief, and soon we'll be announcing the appointment of the new director of water and wastewater resources. We expanded environmental sustainability program through, throughout the city, that included expanding our Earth Day activities and supporting the Peninsula Clean Energy Program. We implemented Project Green Space with a $50,000 award over two years from the Bloomberg Foundation's Cities of Service Grant Program to expand the city's urban canopy and plant trees in Daly City. We recruited and managed the Americor vistas for a year to support Project Green Space. The vistas, along with our sustainability coordinator, with support from over 200 city volunteers, and partnering with 15 local organizations, have been successful in planting nearly 200 trees at various locations in Daly City. We created an electronic book, an ebook, with 71 tree profiles and photos as a resource to be used by residents who have adopted trees that have been planted, and others in the community to plant in our unique climate, which requires certain kinds of landscaping to be installed. We expanded the case management services at the Community Services Center through an effective public nonprofit model with the Daly City Partnership to provide emergency housing, food, and other support services to 4,181 individuals and 1,735 households in need in our community. We opened Pat's Closet at 204 92nd Street, right behind City Hall, to provide residents in need with gently-used clothing and household goods free of charge. We have continued outreach and communication to the public with our very effective e-newsletter, as well as our community newsletter, and established a much more active social media presence on all platforms, and expanded our engagement on Next Door. We've supported the Arts and Culture Commission with successful art exhibit openings and artist receptions. And we are in the process, which you will be hearing about, at a presentation on April 23, we've coordinated the development of a utility box art project in conjunction with the Arts and Culture Commission and Skyline College at 16 different locations in Daly City. So stay tuned for the presentation on that program on April 23. Goals and objectives in the coming biennial budget include continuing to review and update the city's financial sustainability strategy, supporting the council in implementing a strategic planning process, providing leadership and guidance in long-range strategic planning for capital needs in the city, identifying opportunities for expanding paperless processes through the effective use of technology, our Seamless Docs program, and other approaches, supporting the implementation of a new records management system, transitioning support of the Arts and Culture Commission to the Department of Library and Recreation Services to better coordinate community events and programming. We'll also update and modernize the city's climate action plan to incorporate detailed greenhouse gas reduction measures for implementation beyond 2020. We will be creating a coalition of residents, landlords, and property owners and businesses to address illegal dumping that has become quite a pervasive problem citywide. We will work to adopt ordinance... We will work to adopt ordinances to discourage illegal dumping and engage the community in building, in community building, to enhance neighborhood aesthetics. So to get the community involved in improving neighborhoods and the overall aesthetic look. We will maintain efforts to divert municipal waste from the landfill by promoting all forms of recycling and the city's new composting program. And we will implement an environmental procurement policy for the city organization to align our purchasing with standards for environmentally friendly products. Significant change from the prior biennial budget. When the council created an Arts and Culture Commission and appointed the commission, the commission didn't have a home, and it didn't have staff support, as has been the case with all of our other boards and commissions. So, for example, the Planning Commission is supported by the planning staff. The Personnel Board is supported by the HR staff. The Library and Recreation are supported by that department. And we don't have full-time staff in the areas of art and culture in the city manager's department to support that. But in order to kick off the commission and help it to be successful initially, I assigned the assistant city manager to begin that process to work with the commission. But we're going to work to transition this commission's activities and provide adequate staff support in the Department of Library and Recreation, which I think there is a great deal of synergy between the Arts and Culture Commission's mission and the activities of the Recreation Department. And so I think that there will be a more successful collaboration among the staff that are providing a variety of different events and programming to make the Arts and Culture Commission activities successful.
Budget for the city manager office, there are six budget positions. The salary and benefit include the city manager office and the sustainability budget. The service and surprise is $426,000. This includes $60,000 in professional service that was budgeted in the city manager office, $4,000 budget for the office surprise and postage. For the community engagement program, $150,000 is budgeted for the professional service. And for the Community Service Center, $170,000 is budgeted for the professional service that makes up the $426,000 for the city manager budget. And other charges is around $86,000. These charges include membership, publication, travel, meeting, education, which is around $11,000 budget for the city manager office. And there is a $73,000 budget for the community engagement. This is related to the membership. And for the Community Service Center, there's no budget for the other charges. So those are the major charges in the city manager office. And in city manager office, there are two funds. One is the general fund, and the other one is the sustainability budget, is the Stephen position. So the total budget for the two funds is 1.9 million.
I might add that the fully-loaded cost for the sustainability coordinator was initially covered by funding from Republic Services. However, as that position receives increases, negotiated increases like other city employees, those costs are not covered by Republic Services. And the city has been absorbing that additional cost for that position. I think it's an investment well made because I think that the sustainability coordinator has just expanded the city's sustainability efforts substantially and has been very successful at writing grants, not just for Cities of Service and the Project Greenspace, but a variety of other smaller grants to help support the activities that that position is engaged in. So in other words, that position is paying for itself with the extra work that it is providing beyond just monitoring the Republic Services contract.
So in the current fiscal year, the expenditure for that program is $188,000. And the funding coming from the Republic Services is around $160,000. So there's a funding gap of $27,000 in 2019. And for fiscal year 2020, the total expenditure for the program is $207,000. And the revenue coming from Republic Services is $165,000. So there's a funding gap of $42,000 in the second year of the budget. And this is the city manager general fund budget. And the general fund budget include several programs, as I just mentioned before. This include the city manager, the community engagements, and the Community Service Center. So the service and surprise is $450,000. Other charges around 86, so the total expenditure budget for the city manager office is 1.8 million. Any question from the council?
FTEs was six. I'm trying to figure out where they're at. And the city manager.
The city manager, the assistant city manager. The three positions, although only two are currently filled on the support side. So that's five, and then the sustainability coordinator, that's six.
All right, but right now, we got a couple of vacant, right?
The assistant city manager is vacant currently. And the admin secretary position is not filled permanently at this time. It's filled on an acting basis by the senior executive assistant.
Can you go down to the next, the fixed charges? For some reason, this keeps coming back to me. So I would assume every department will have a line item that says fixed charges because they're taking up space.
That's correct. So we apportion each department's contribution to the overall cost for custodial service, building maintenance, those kinds of things, based on the square footage that they utilize for their programmatic activities.
Okay, so we basically charge them, or they have to pay. And that's included in the budget. But then, under salaries, are we not double-dipping? In the sense, because when we talk about salaries, the custodians are being paid.
They're not paying them twice. They're just...
They're not paying them twice. The funding...
You're accounting for the services.
Right.
So that you take the custodian's salary and all the stuff, and you divide it up by the square foot, and you put it out for every department.
So they all help fund those positions.
Okay, so a police officer, I guess it would be the citizens, huh?
Well, no, the police officer, because it's a defined thing.
But somebody's got to pay.
Well, we all pay.
That's what I meant.
It's called taxes.
That's what I meant. Okay, okay. I'm slowly getting my hands, my arms around it.
And then what's interesting is that we used to not do that. I mean, all the little things didn't used to be divided all up like that. But it makes so much more sense in a budget to go by what it really costs to run a department, to really do that. By every square inch, you need to do it, or your budget doesn't make any sense.
Now, for example, I did by number of PC, number of PC application in your PC, and how many server department user limits. Going down to a very detailed level in order to recover the full cost of the services, more complicated than you think.
Yes, it is. So the distribution of costs is done on an equitable basis.
Any other questions? I have a question that was mentioned earlier with the assistant city manager. Since it's not filled right now, the budget we're looking at, does it reflect the vacancy?
Yes, it does. That position has been held vacant, again, like the administrative secretary position for the new city manager to be able to conduct a recruitment and selection of an assistant city manager. And I would strongly suggest to the council that that position remain as a funded position for the new city manager because it has been extremely difficult, and there are many things that are not getting done because I can't do two jobs. I've done my job, and I've done a portion of the assistant's job, but I can't do two full-time jobs. And so things have been set aside, and I've had to prioritize because I can't do all the things that the assistant was doing when that position was filled.
No, I understand that that's a needed position. I was just saying, in the budget, is it reflected? Therefore, we didn't have one actually in fiscal sixteen, seventeen. So an actual spend, an actual, we didn't spend that. And you're telling me now in this...
That's why it's lower.
In this budget for fiscal... No, she said that it's, she mentioned it is allocated in here, and I just asked her.
The position is funded.
The nineteen-twenty budget, right?
Yeah, the position is funded, so that's what I'm saying.
In nineteen-twenty, yeah. Because those positions will all be filled.
Well, and I will have to say, we have used salary savings from the assistant's position to pay for certain expenses that we had. So for example, I had to do a recruitment and selection for department head. So I use salary savings to cover certain expenditures. So we did use salary savings from the position when it wasn't filled to be able to make expenditures for other things that were not anticipated.
So they were reallocated to...
Yes, the salary savings were used and reallocated for other purposes in order to continue to conduct business over that period of time.
Were they all reallocated for that service? I mean, how is it... I mean, I know you needed funds to hire or hire or use that to, as you mentioned, but were they the whole amount of...
No, absolutely not.
But when you look at the entire budget, it's any salary and benefit saving that is projected for the end of the year, you may be transferred from that line item to the service and surprise or even to other charges, to some of the professional service. Now, for example, we hire a consultant to recruit for executive staff, and we don't have the funding in that line item. So the salary saving will be transferred to there to provide the service.
Okay, thank you. And so I know what's in front of us right now is just a budget summary. Are we able to get a more detailed summary?
What would you be interested in getting?
What would you be interested in getting? We will provide whatever information, but what are you looking for?
Oh, just exactly. For instance, what we're able to save and what did we use it for? Exactly what you mentioned. Like from the salary savings that you've had from, we weren't able to hire an assistant manager. So just understanding where the reallocations went.
For which year?
So that will be included in the budget to actual report that we send to the council. It will reflect in that report.
Okay.
It would be in the one that we just got.
Yes.
Binder, the 2017.
Right, okay.
Right, yeah. It's in there somewhere. Okay, good.
So it's the thousand-page report that showed the detail.
Okay. Can you just send me and highlight the area that I requested?
Which area is it? Like the...
The city manager.
City manager, okay.
Yeah, thank you very much. And if there's no other questions, I really want to thank everyone, all my colleagues, the staff here. If there's anyone watching in the audience, we've all turned into pumpkins. Really, such, thank you for all being here and all the support of the staff and for all of the departments that presented to each and every one of us. Do you have to motion to adjourn?
Well, I will add, we will have food available for you in advance of the Monday and Tuesday meetings. I doubt that you want to eat pizza every time, so I'll have the staff contact you about ordering sandwiches from Panera or something else for the meeting, in advance of the meeting. And we'll have it available, like, by five o'clock so you can come and eat before the meeting, if that, okay?
Thank you very much. And so I think now the meeting is adjourned.